Could someone please, it's not 29, the date's the 29th. Does anyone want to, can someone please elect Treasurer Slavens as clerk tonight?
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion to appoint Treasurer Slavens as temporary clerk for the meeting.
Motion made by Trustee Foster, supported by Trustee Borninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Treasurer Slavens, can you please take roll call?
Absolutely. Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Huda.
Good evening.
Clerk Seacrest is not here tonight, and Treasurer Slavens is here, and Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here also.
Great. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First item we have, and only item we have on the agenda, is a study session on the capital improvement plan and paving update. And to lead us off would be Director Smith.
Thank you. I do have a presentation if I can share my screen. Okay. I also emailed this presentation to all of the board about 10 minutes ago, and then I have paper copies as well. So we covered all mediums tonight. For the last couple of years, as the board is well aware, we've been working on our large CIP projects, and we all know that the market's been pretty volatile in, pretty much across the board. So there's been some things that have been approved and other things that we've been working on, cost-cutting measures, and then reviewing with the full-time electeds and working with internal staff, both MSD along with the Finance Department. So we wanted to run through, do a real quick overview of where we're at to date on the CIP projects, and then kind of dive into some of the upcoming CIP bids that we put out along with some of the paving bids, because that's where we've seen the biggest overages, if you will, in our bids coming back compared to what was originally budgeted, and then have a discussion in regards to how we move forward from here. And I welcome questions as we move through the process, because this is a pretty high-level presentation with the opportunity for lots of questions and discussion to be had. And we have John and Sarah here, as well as Lons Wendy and Dave to answer any questions, too. So we've got everybody here, and hopefully we can get through this and all come out on the other side agreeing. So I'll dive right into it. Wanted to first give a real high-level overview of some of the bids that have been awarded to date, and you all have approved at board meetings before. One is the Heritage Park parking lots. There are three of them to be completed. One is already completed. The other two will be done in the spring. We just completed nine holes at the Pheasant Run Golf Course with the cart paths, with the remaining 18 holes to be done hopefully next year. Those bids will go out in the spring. We've done a lot of work in ADA compliance. Some of it, it's partially been awarded and completed. We're still working on some of the ADA work that was identified. The Summit Interiors, that kicked off about three weeks ago, I believe. And so there's a lot of work happening over at the Summit, and that was awarded a couple months ago by the board, and that is well underway at this point. Various HVAC upgrades have been occurring throughout the township, and this has actually been going on for the last couple of years. Some of it been identified through this CIP project and other things, other improvements have been done outside of it as well, because we found that there's been some deficiencies, and our HVAC units were quite old, and there wasn't a maintenance program put in place prior to. And then we've done some other internal CIP projects, and I'm going to throw it to John, who's going to go over some of that work that we've done internally.
Sure. I'll run through quickly what we took on internally as a facility department, which originally some of these projects were outlined in the CRESSA program, but I thought we could move a little more swift on some of these projects, as well as bundling for dynamic pricing at the same time. So we approximately have 13 CIP projects we completed internally. I'll just high-level call out some of them. HVAC equipment, a total of nine units were replaced throughout the township across the Summit, Admin, Victory Park, and Human Services Building. A lot of those were called out as the ones that are needing the most maintenance, repair, and attention and cost. And every one of those were identified using R22 refrigerant that as of today has jumped up to $1,700 for a 30-pound tank. In 2021, it was around $650. So quite the difference there, and I don't see that cost coming down. It just keeps increasing. Some of the vendors that we would purchase this refrigerant from are no longer even allowing us to purchase. There was Carrier, for example. We had one purchase, and that's it for the lifetime. So that's why we're being a little bit aggressive with HVAC needs. Other ones were Fellows Creek irrigation pumps. There were 350 horsepower motors that were replaced for the whole irrigation system at Fellows Creek. Long overdue. That one's successful. As far as more Fellows Creek, we had the roof that was actually just completed probably a couple of weeks ago. We do have a final punch list walk on Friday to solidify that and close that project out. We do have RTA, who is our consultant with that, going to be walking with us as well to make sure it's up to par. Summit on the park, we had a lot of tension on that one. There was quite a bit that happened there. The rubber roof as well, in conjunction with the Fellow Creek roof, was completed last week. Friday, that will be an additional walk with that one. Over the last couple of weeks, we've noticed a lot of incomplete items there. We've called out, and they were addressed quickly. So this Friday punch walk will take quite a bit of time. It was a big project. Obviously, a lot of square footage over there. Keeping on the Summit, copper roof was replaced. The skylights were replaced in the gymnasium, and that was a big one that we really had a hidden effect during the day. We don't have to have the lights on as often, saving energy there just because of the skylights. The old ones had a lot of rubber over them because of leaks, so they pretty much took away the skylight effect. So with these new skylights, we're seeing a little bit more results. Summit pool pumps, all of them replaced. So we had four in there. One of them was inoperable upon my start in 2021, leaving only one operational for the activities. And if that one went down, we had no backup. So that was a point of emphasis for us. So we had all four replaced for the water slide, the activities. The lap pool has two. So those are all new this year as well. Metal doors throughout, metal frame doors. There were some that were showing some signs of rust, and a couple of them actually, you know, had a little bit of a safety concern with rust pockets coming through if someone cuts themselves on those. So I think there was 17 total that we replaced internal at the Summit as well. We resurfaced the track upstairs, new lockers in the fitness locker rooms. Then Fire Station 1, we did a complete LED light upgrade because there were the old halogen lights in there. And then in conjunction with that portion, we bought direct for LED light fixtures for the bay, and they were going to install those internally, saving us $9,000 on that, versus what some of the bids were coming back for a contractor to do that work. We do have a lift, and we do have skilled individuals in the maintenance department that know how to wire, and they're familiar with electrical, along with our building department here. We have licensed electricians to bounce off any ideas or obstacles that might be in our way, and then they can do the final inspection. Finally, Pheasant Run Fence Corral. I know we had major issues there with that fence falling over weekends, nights, and creating a vulnerability on our assets, golf carts in there, our gas and gas tank in there. So that was completed as well. Those are the high-level, the 13 internal projects. We do have a few more that are on the books right now that are going to be started internally as well, one of them being Summit Boilers. That's going to be a big project for us, too. So happy to answer any questions on those that we conducted internally. Any feedback? Happy to help.
Stephen?
I guess the only question is, will we see, like, on those, the overages in terms of the cost of things going up so much? Is that something we'll see at some point?
So all of those have come before the board for approval?
I'm not saying for approval, but like...
Versus budget?
Yeah, versus budget. Like, did they go over, yeah?
Yeah, we could probably run something like that. I don't know that we have, I don't know that I have that tonight. I apologize for that, but I think we could easily run that.
Just for an understanding of how much things are inflated.
I can, we can speak to the roofs. I know the roofs came in actually under budget.
I identified a few on here of those. So for the pumps at Fellows Creek, we were under approximately $60,000. We saved. The copper roof, we're under $250,000 was saved on the copper roof. The rubber roof, even with the price increase, so the rubber roof at the Summit in Fellows Creek, we had to come back with $138,000 addition to that because of the prices increased so much, but we still managed to be $70,000 under our budgeted price. Summit skylight was approximately $5,000 under. Fire station LED upgrades was $1,000 on the internal, and then $9,000 saves during the bay lighting. Now HVAC, some of those were over. I don't have those exact numbers. I just highlighted the big dollar amount savings, but I do know that they are documented in a spreadsheet that we have, all the numbers coming back.
Yeah, you had mentioned a few overages, and it made me feel like everything came in over. It's not the case, so that's good to know.
It's good balance. I'd say that $250,000 on the copper roof saved is a big, that's the most notable one overall. Anything overage that stuck out to me, the highest that I can speak of on these projects was about $30,000 on the overage for mechanical equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's important to note that some of those overage or under the savings were allocated to other projects that came in over. So the Summit Interiors came in significantly over budget, so some of those savings were used for other projects.
Yeah, sure.
But one of the spreadsheets that we had been sending out and had been preparing for the board was, here's where the completed projects are, and here's the available dollars for that, and here's what hasn't been started yet. We can certainly get that pulled together and send that out to the board again, so you guys can see where those, all the projects stand.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So moving on to kind of the meat of what we're going to talk to tonight, that's kind of giving a little bit of history, and you can see that we had some overages, we've had some savings, and we've done some of, we've broken out the rest of the CIP projects into five categories, and we're going to kind of go through each one, because they have come in all over the board, from under budget to well over 200% over budget. And it's really hard to move forward with these projects without having this kind of discussion and getting a feel from the board as to how we want to move forward. So we met internally with the full-time electeds and the deputy supervisor, and broke out the remaining projects into these five categories. One is the Summit Pool and Aquatic Center Tile Project. The second is Victory Park with the ball field poles and lights. The third is Summit Interiors, and I'll pause right there, make a little caveat that that's actually already been awarded, and it's moving forward, but it worked well into our calculation when we started to figure out how much we're going to need to complete the projects. The remaining of the ADA projects, and then all of the paving projects, including the administration parking lot, which we finally got the bids back. So those are the five that we're going to spend the time tonight speaking to. Before we go too far into, I just want to, I think John alluded to it with his explanation that we reviewed all of our projects for alternatives and eliminations. And part of the alternatives was also bringing it in-house. So instead of having CRESSA manage it and having Hegley perform the work, John's taken, and his team have taken on some of that responsibility, and we've actually taken in what we could manage and still get done, what we need to on a daily basis. And in some cases, it's resulted in a cost savings. And then, like Wendy said, and I don't have it on here, some of those overages have been reallocated into some of the, I'm sorry, some of the savings has been reallocated into some of the overages that have been brought to the board previously. But we did go through and looking at everything on the list of 100 and some projects, we did realize that we could cut about $700,000 by taking some things internally and looking at other ways to accomplish some of the projects that are on the list. So I think that's important to note moving forward.
And also, in addition to that, also, you know, John had, when you looked at it, not only were you able to do some projects, you were able to eliminate some, like the one boiler. You know, when John first came on, he was able to say, no, let's do this instead. So that saved us a lot of money also. That's a good job.
Yeah, John's done a fantastic job with analyzing all that, so kudos to you and your team. So this kind of paints a picture of, again, breaks down the projects that I just mentioned. We have the original budget, and I should have put it on here, and I didn't, but that original budget was set in 2017. And I think we say that every time we meet, because it's important to realize that that was five years ago, very different world we lived in, very different economy. And then the next column shows funds that have previously been awarded or utilized, and that would be some of the design work. So although it's not obviously eating up 100% of the funding, a lot of it is engineering and design work that has been utilized to this point. So then you have the remaining budget of the original budget in column three. And this is where it gets really out of whack, because the next column is the estimated bid cost. Some of those are estimated, and some of those are actually true bids. And so you can see the Summit Pool and Aquatic Center, or Aquatic Tile Project came in at $1.7 million. Victory Park, the Ball Field Poles and Lights, this number is fresh as of yesterday, and that is about $4 million. Summit Interiors, this has already been awarded, so it's just up here to show the, again, the variation that we're seeing in what the bids are coming back at. It came in 42% over what the budget was. The remaining ADAs, we're seeing that they're going to, it's going to be a wash, or 1% under, but that's basically going to come in on budget. And then the paving projects, which were previously bid, those have come in about 90% over what the original budget was back to 2017. It's important to note, too, that some of the paving projects, we bid out about five projects last year, and utilized some of the funds from two of those to award and complete three of them. So we've reduced that. So we still have those two outstanding projects, even though those dollars have been utilized. This is actually the paving breakdown specifically, because this has been probably one of the most... We have needs all over the township, so we have some of this which was bid out, and we saw the percentages that came back in, and so we applied that average to some of the other projects throughout the township. And these are actually all on the original CIP list. And some of them have changed scope, though. For instance, the very first line item is the Admin Public Safety Parking Lot Project. So that bid actually came back in at $3.6 million with an original bid of $1.4. Veterans Way, $341,000, that was one that was, that was actually a true bid number that came back, but we allocated those funds to the Heritage Park parking lots. Parks and Golf Maintenance, that's the lot in the back down Heritage Drive as well. Pheasant Run Golf Course Parking, that's an estimate of $467,000. And then we have the Cart Paths, that truly was bid out, and we're going to see that come in just over budget of about $178,000. Then there were some other paving projects that we have not yet bid nor we estimated, but I wanted to list them out, because there are things that are, that were listed in the original budget that we're going to have to address at some point and haven't been addressed in many, many years. And I'll just, I just put those up here. Victory Park, Sheldon School, Griffin Park, Heritage Park, Flodden Park, the Summit Parking Lot, the Gun Range, and then Fellows Creek Parking Lot. It's important to note that not all of these locations, that doesn't mean the entire parking lot. For instance, Fellows Creek did not include the entire parking lot. I believe it included the maintenance area, and I think the entrance. Am I right on that, Sarah? Yeah. So it, in the cart paths. So it depends on location, what, how, to what degree we were going to redo the paving on those. We've talked internally about some alternatives, and I don't know, Emery, if you want to chime in here, but we did talk about if there was an opportunity to take a parking lot back to gravel, is that something that the township wants to consider? I will say that there's still a lot of discussion that needs to be had in some cost estimates, because there is still ongoing maintenance when you take a parking lot back to gravel. You're going to have actually more annual maintenance than you would with pavement or concrete, because you're going to have to fill in potholes. You're going to have to bring in millings and fill the potholes and things like that. So in...
So these are future, so these are future projects, right? Or are they scheduled for next year?
These, these are all scheduled as part of the original CIP. So as of right now, they're not scheduled for next year.
Okay. But they are, they're part of CIP, but they will happen in the upcoming?
They will happen if the board allocates dollars.
Okay, okay, got you. But they're part of the CIP.
They are part of the overall CIP that was approved that we're trying...
The previous slide is the ones that have been planned, and this one is, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yes.
So as Jade said, I mean, there's a lot of considerations. You can see the costs are coming in at 200-plus percent over. So, you know, what priorities do we want to set? If you look at surrounding communities like Northville or something like that, they'll have gravel parking lots, although like Jade said, you have to take it back to gravel, and then you have to maintain it. You have to buy the machinery to maintain it, and you have to yearly maintain it. It's better for the environment, because you don't have the runoff of the water, so that is a plus. But you also have ADA issues, which means you would have to have a separate section for ADA, you know, at least pave that part. So there's a lot to consider. So there still is a cost to it in various ways.
Right. I think, and it's also worth noting, too, that this is a discussion that I think we've had, but we have not worked with the police chief or the leisure services director. I know John's sitting back here going, hmm, haven't heard that before. But, so obviously, we've got some internal conversations that we would need to have if that was the direction that the board wanted to go. And then we could put some hard numbers together and say, okay, what it would cost to really, you know, maintain and pave, repave that parking lot, a portion of that parking lot, or take it all back to gravel. So options on the table.
Jade, do we have any kind of ranking or rating for the conditions of these different parking lots?
So without hiring another consultant to go out and spend more money to do that, Dave and I went on a tour, and we drove them, and I will, and please say if I'm wrong, Dave, they're all the same. These parking lots have not been maintained in years. And, you know, certain parts are okay. When you enter into Griffin Park, it seems to be okay. You get towards the back in the soccer fields, it's a mess. So I would say the same thing with Flodden. John, would you agree? Yeah. So you can, you could pick apart a parking lot, go, yeah, that part is great, and then you turn, you're like, wow, and that looks like, you know, a bomb went off. So...
Okay. You're not going to make it easy for us.
I'm not. And I wish, I wish that I could, because we did, we spent a whole afternoon driving all of these sites. And, I mean, could we prioritize them? Absolutely, because I think we could look at usage. And that's where I think the conversations could be had with leisure services to say, okay, where does it fall on the usage priority? And we absolutely could do that.
Okay. I would love to see that.
Unless you have a big hole in the middle of one also. Because like you said, it might be fine, but you turn around, it's all crumbled. So maybe you just do that section for safety reasons.
Right. Yeah.
So for example... Usage data would be good, too, you know.
Yeah, and I'd have to coordinate, because I'm not, the usage of the parks, there's got to, how we track that, but we could probably put our heads together and come up with a way to track that.
And does the gun range get as much usage as the parks?
No.
I'm imagining not.
No.
Well, our police use it, but also other police do also. So, yeah, we could find out that. Jade could help us with that.
Is the Summit the big one, or it's the hole?
I can't look at my spreadsheet, because I'm presenting.
Did it? I don't remember. I couldn't imagine...
It was all of Victory Park. I will have to get back to it. Because I'm clearing my screen, I can't look at my spreadsheet, but I have a spreadsheet that has all of the breakdown on it.
Victory Park, that's just half of ours, right? Because then Arctic Edge, I mean, those who are leasing it, they do the rest.
Yeah, it was broken out into quads.
I guess with the use that Summit and Victory Park get, I'll be interested to see, like, if it's even feasible to turn those into gravel, because...
Yeah, with the usage. And I will say Victory Park is way worse than the Summit. It's, I mean, you can see conduit and stuff out there.
And it gets such use. So some of these others, I agree, we could probably do. Do you have any feeling for if turning it to gravel will get us back to the budget-type prices, or is it still more expensive?
So you're going to have to pay to bring in a contractor to mill what's there, and then put it, and then obviously lay it back out. And then we'd have to work with public works on a maintenance program. It may involve buying additional equipment. So we may see some savings, but it'd be really, it'd be really hard to estimate that right now, not knowing what equipment we would actually need. And depending on how big of a, you know, I can't sit here and say that I would ever recommend taking Victory Park to gravel. I don't know that that makes any sense. But if you're going to take parking lots of that size and take them back, well, then that changes the kind of maintenance equipment you're going to need. You might as well buy a bigger grader or an underbelly for your trucks. If you're doing just smaller parks, we may be able to get away with gators and things like that. So I think it really varies. I know I'm really not giving you good answers, because it's all...
If you said one of these parks was budgeted for $100,000, and then the bids are coming in at $400,000, but milling it would bring it back down to like $150,000, that seems reasonable to me, and seems preferable, especially because we can maintain it ourselves.
Correct.
Going forward. If there's a little pothole, we can fill it, and if you have the equipment to camp it down.
We absolutely could do that.
Yeah. So going forward, it might be preferable to have them that way.
Yep. And I think...
I agree with Stephen on maybe the larger parks, you want to keep concrete, but the smaller parks going with the gravel. And even if there's a small area that you're concerned about ADA, having a small area either paved or...
And when we get into that, you'd want to make sure that there was enough handicap parking spots that were adjacent to the walkways to get to the facility, whether it's the playground, or the tennis courts, or pickleball, or whatever it may be. So that would take some coordination with engineering, for sure, on that, too. So...
Another option is if you go all concrete, is it, these will just take longer to do, right? You know, we have to move some out. So what is that priority?
Right. Well, that's why I was hoping we would have an idea of which ones were in the worst condition, so we could...
Yeah. And we were talking earlier, too, it's worth noting that the only items, the only locations that we looked at were what were in the original CIP. So this doesn't look at other parks that weren't identified in 2017 as needing maintenance. So for instance, you'll notice Independence Park is not on here, Preservation Park, which is already gravel, is not on here. So some of the other parks that we have are not listed here because they weren't on the original, this CIP. They may be in CIP moving forward on an annual basis as the need arises, but we didn't evaluate those here.
Right. These were really the parking lots identified back in 2016 and 2017 when we were doing this, as being in really poor condition. So they certainly have not improved over the last five years.
And Wendy, remind me, did the money, the budget come from a bond, or...
Partially. We had bonded initially the CIP projects that we were targeting to do in 2020 and 2021, and then we were planning to use fund balance for 2022 and 2023. But we all know what happened with COVID and trying to get these projects going, so...
And we've been paying back that bond the last four years or five years?
We issued it in 2020.
Oh, we didn't issue it until 2020?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And timing of a parking lot, how long does it last? What's the lifespan? 20 years? 30 years?
Blacktop, or...
Yeah, the blacktop, yeah.
Well, I could make a joke, because in Canton, they lasted like 20, 30 years. But to be quite honest, you could make them last 20 years, as long, if you had preventative maintenance done. So if we were to be proactive and do patching on a more regular basis... So if we were to be proactive and do patching on a more regular basis, that could happen, crack sealing. There's a lot of preventative maintenance stuff that you can do with asphalt. So regardless of what we do, we can expand that that lifespan. But 20 years is is a lot to get out of a parking lot before having to redo something.
If you look at the slide before, I mean, you kind of have a priority there if you think about it. The one that shows on, oh, I'm sorry, the admin, like admin building, that's probably the number one priority, just if you look at the status. And also that also includes the fence around it, right? Correct?
Yes, and that project actually includes Underground Storm, which we have a big issue with at this location.
So that one's probably number one. And Veterans Way, you guys have been patching that on your own. I mean, that's, but if you think about cars driving up and down.
And in a, in a few slides, we have a breakdown of some cost, cost breakdown as to how we could allocate some of those. And I, kudos to Wendy, it was her idea, but I think we found a way that, without general fund dollars, that we could fund Veterans Way and Heritage Park Drive. So. But I didn't want to, I didn't want to get ahead of myself.
Wouldn't you think, though, the admin building would be probably the top priority based on the stormwater issues that we're having and?
Yeah, and I think, you know, when you look at the safety aspect of it as well, like I said, this project, the scope has changed completely since it was talked about in 2017. So when you look at today's day and age, we've taken care of the safety measures with the tower and the generator, which were the big issues. So we've, we've permanently taken care of that, but you still have the safety perspective around that parking lot. Any more questions on the paving part of it?
Do you need us to rank something or?
Well. Yes, and I I guess the reason that I I need to bring something else up that I forgot is the admin parking lot, that has been bid out. That is a hard number, that 3.658 million. We, that bid, we had to, the bid expired the end of November, actually today. But we were able to work with the the contractor and they've extended it 30 days. So we have until the end of the year to make our decision on that. If we don't make a decision on that and award that contract, then that nullifies that bid and we'll have to go back out to bid again. If if the desire was to even do the project. So that one there is actually has some time associated with it. And, you know, as far as ranking the other ones, I'm jumped to the, to the second to the bottom, the cart paths have already been started. So that is kind of priority number one as well because that's going to continue next year. And the Veterans Way, the parks, golf maintenance, in the, in Pheasant Run Golf Course Parking Lot, those could use some rankings from a, from a board priority. And that's not counting these.
I have a question, and this may be a dumb question, but for the admin public safety parking lot, would part of that be paid for with public safety dollars? Okay.
Yeah, so maybe what we should do is go through the rest of it and then see how we've got it broken down and then we can kind of come back to it. That might make sense to do that. Here we are. This was the next slide. Oh, sorry, I missed one. So when you look at the summary between what the original budget was, the funds that were previously already spent or awarded, budget dollars allocated to other projects, which is where we talked about, there were dollars that were shifted from one paving project to another. And then we've got remaining budgets, estimated bid costs or hard bid costs. The last column shows you where we're at to complete the rest of the CIP that has not already been awarded. And that number is 10.6 million dollars.
If I may elaborate a little bit on that, we basically took the percentages of the average percentages of the projects that were bid out, that were already bid out and came up with that average and applied that percentage to the unbid projects to come up with an estimated dollar amount of what the future bids would come in at. So and we broke them out into those categories. So the paving projects were coming in significantly over budget, so we used a different percentage for that. The summit pool and aquatic tile, that was what the project actually came in at last summer when the bid came back in. I'm not sure if they're holding their prices. It's probably going to have to get rebid. So hopefully it comes in the same that it was bid out last year. That was an additional known need of 1.2 million. We got some bids back on Victory Park. We know that cost is $4 million.
It's estimated.
It's still estimated?
Yep, the labor hasn't been.
Okay.
It's, it's estimated as of yesterday, today's cost, correct? So it's.
Okay. So that one, we didn't apply a percentage that's based on some relatively good estimates. So we know that's going to need another 2.8 million dollars. And then the other CIP projects, so those things, we didn't, we didn't add anything for the ADA projects. We actually went through a listing of all of the other projects that were on the CIP listing and said, any of the ADA has been coming in under budget. We don't need additional dollars for those. So we didn't ask for anything additional for those. But the rest of the projects, we said, we based on the summit interior bids that came back in, which were 42% over budget. And so that's how we applied what we needed for the rest of those projects. So of that $10 million, the big ones are the Victory Park for 2.8 million. The back parking lot, which is another almost $3 million, so right there, we accounted for over half of it. And the aquatic pool tile at 1.3 million. So really, you know, some of these other ones are, I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money. But when you're talking about, you know, 70 projects for a million dollars in the grand scheme of things, that's, that's really spread throughout a lot of different, a lot of different projects.
And just to give an example of some of those off the top of my head, like carpeting, carpet tiles throughout this building were on there. There's some toilet partitions, bathroom updates, that type of thing. I think there were some wall coverings, some ceiling replacements. So various things and throughout, and not just all in this building, but throughout all of the township buildings. Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about this one. So then from there, that $10 million, 10.6 million, we broke down among the different funds. So starting at the top with the paving needs, all the parking lots with the estimation, the back admin parking lot, a lot of the parks, most of those hit the general fund for the 3.4 million dollars. Jade had alluded to other funding options for Heritage Park Drive and Veterans Way. If I said those names right, of those roads, those actually would qualify because those are local roads. We could actually use our, our road millage dollars for those projects. And that was about $700,000. So it's not a lot, but it's something that takes it out of the general fund. And the estimation of the admin parking lot back here that would go towards the police and fire, we allocated up there about 50/50. The police has a little bit higher because of the gun range parking lot is included in in the police column as well. The aquatic tile, you know, we would put that in the summit, but we know this general fund just transfers money over to subsidize the summit. So I just included that in the general fund. Victory Park's all general fund. And then the other projects listed below for the, the one that had the 42% that had a total of $960,000. The majority of those were general fund items, but there were some certain things in the fire, the various fire stations, like some facade improvements. And I think maybe some carpet upgrades to a couple of the fire stations, maybe some windows or something, something minor in some of the fire stations. There's also a very minor amount for police and then very minor amounts again for water and sewer. So that's, the totals would be broken down by the funds at the bottom there, the estimated amounts that we would need based on the crystal ball, based on where bids came in. So the estimated amounts are there.
Can we get any of the wraparound grants for any of the ADA improvements from MMRMA at all?
The wrap grants?
Yeah. You found one for 100,000 today for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'd have to check the list.
For the ADA?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's small, but.
So this is the last slide that we have to go over tonight. But wanted to present this to you that clearly, as we move through these projects, we're, we're narrowing in on, these right here are your, are your final five projects. Well, there's only four here because the summit interiors have already been awarded. But you can, you can see that these are the the final projects. And we have, there's obviously decisions that have to be made. So just wanted to open up for discussion and see if there's any more information or detail that we can provide or go back and and do some more.
One thing I heard was so prioritization to determine usage for the parks, you know, to help us with that. And then prioritize the ones that are, you know, where it needs ADA usage, where that's really crumbled right now. So even though we might prioritize a park that's lower, if there's an ADA issue, we should prioritize that as we know. And then I guess, you know, your estimates on taking it to gravel, the equipment needed, the milling, the yearly maintenance, just to give us an idea there for so many square feet.
I have a couple of questions. So the summit pool that, no, I'm, I'm not going to paving that we already talked about. But these, the two big, other two big projects are Victory Park and Summit Pool. And I understand they were part of the CIP. But when we were talking about Summit, is it like the entire, the two pools or just, just one of the pools is?
John, you want to?
For that, it's the both, all of the pool deck, inside the pool, the lap pool, activities pool. And the Marsanite Cove in the lazy river, as well as the corridor to the locker rooms and the locker rooms, the steam room and hot tub. So it's pretty much everything.
So can, my question is, can these be broken down or it has to be gone, going?
No.
It has to be happen, happening at once?
We talked about phased approach. That would prolong having certain things shut down. We talked about doing the pool deck and the pools first. Obviously, we'll, with demo mobilizing and demobilizing, to do it in phases will drive the cost up. So we did, that was a viable option until we saw the, you know, the the mobilization. It really hinders our ability to get it all done with the demo companies that are out there. The, with school districts, they like to be in and out and not have to come back. So that's why they drive the cost up.
And and I.
Right. My question is, what if we didn't do the locker rooms and like, is that like, I'm just trying to see what we can prioritize and like safety wise or cosmetic wise or?
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
I agree with everything John's saying. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that Greg's not here to have this discussion, too. And I know, I know John is, but we had these discussions a few months ago about phasing it, too. And when we look at the way that the summit does business and there are cycles that. That there's some other considerations to be looked at, too, but anything is possible. We can break it down into to multiple phases, but I think that's a, that's another conversation as well. I know, I don't know if you want to speak to it or not, John, but there's, there was, there was already a lot of conversation about it. So that's why it was delayed from this year till next year.
I am available online, though. Jade.
Trevor, I think your mic might, is that you? Oh, I'm sorry.
You guys able to hear me?
There you go. Okay. Where is that?
Oh, Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, I am available if you have any questions.
So we were just talking about the phasing approach, just to let, give you a little bit of history. They had first quoted the summit pool aquatic during COVID. And I think we had one or two bidders or some, two bids.
One at 1.2 and one at just over a million.
Yeah, so it was pretty expensive at that time. So we kind of, we waited, we put it off for that. And then we looked at it again for this, this year, 2022, and we decided to do it next year because we would have had to have closed the pool at the same time, you know, and disrupted the service. But like you said, we might have to rebid it. However, we had looked at the phasing approach. It was too expensive to to do it that way.
Yeah, no, my, my thoughts were like, you know, just like we are talking about gravel and ADA part, do we do, do we have to do the whole thing? Do we do half of it and?
Well, we looked at the average lifetime of tile also at that time. And what would it, was it determined to be, I mean, remember, it's like 25 years old right now. What was it determined to be?
15 to 20 if we consistently did regrouting and resurfacing and sealing, the sealing of it. I can't speak on the history of that as happened often. I have a good indication that it has not. Internally, we have replaced where there's missing tile. We've grouted certain areas that were becoming loose. But I don't think the maintenance program would give the longevity of 20-plus years currently.
We even talked about maybe even buying the tiles for everything and only doing the pool and doing the work on the tiles for the locker rooms later. So that's an option that we had looked at also.
So what would help me prioritize? I mean, I, I like how you started with, you know, like ADA and things like that. But if anything's a safety issue, I think we need to look at, you know, move that up in priority.
I, I agree with that.
Right.
Like, that's.
Can you give us an idea of what, what's going on at Victory Park with the poles and the lights?
Yeah.
Yeah. As far as safety, I can speak on that. So we have 52 light poles total at Victory Park. They're graded in the category one through four, one being you have 10 to 20 years of lifespan on it, four is you're critical. Between categories three and four, we have 31 poles combined that were in those, those categories. So three and four, you're, you're on maybe a five-year lifespan or less when you're getting to the fours. And quite a few of those have been leaning and cracking. You can see rebar coming through and you see some electrical exposed. So those are the ones that are, that make up the 31 light poles that we have projected in this $4 million project. And then the lights are also included. But for safety, those are the poles that we identified as as top priority out of the 52 total.
Okay, I'm talking about safety for all of the, all of the projects. So even like the pool and the aquatic center, is that a safety issue? And I think, you know, I'm sure that parking lots can be, I mean, trip and fall and, you know, issues like that. So if anything is, you know, like, just like for us to prioritize, we need to know what might be a safety issue. Now, it sounds like if there's exposed electrical, it could be a safety issue. Yeah. So would it be helpful if we listed like our, our priorities? What was the other thing you said besides ADA and Anne Marie?
ADA, okay, so anything that's ADA, usage for, for the parks is usage, ADA usage definitely. Sounds like we have a live mic somewhere else. Trevor, do you have a live mic in the next room?
So safe, so.
Taking, then the other one was taking it to gravel.
Usage, ADA and safety so far.
Can I jump in? So looking at the previous slide, it looks like, and tell me if I'm wrong. So the budget needed there, the 10,600,000, that's above and beyond what's in the first column there. So the first column, I think, is around $9 million. So we budgeted $9 million for these projects and we really need $20 million essentially for these projects. So my question is, Wendy, where's the money going to come from? So, so like if we're, if we're saying what our priorities are, do we even have like the money to go someplace to take it from? General fund or whatever dollars to bridge the 9 million to the 20?
Yeah, we do have some fund balance available. We have been earmarking some dollars at the end of each year, you know, and we have our end of the year and we finish better. The, the year-end results have been better. We've known there's a number of items that have needed to be addressed and we knew they were coming in over budget. You know, the capital items, we know we need to address legacy costs. And so one of the things that I sit down with Anne Marie at the end of the audit, we talk about it and we kind of earmark at the end of the audit for future board priorities, including capital, legacy costs. And and we kind of earmark those dollars and set them aside. So there are dollars available.
Is there 10 million for this stuff or do we have to like say five or something? No, you think so?
Well, for the general fund, the eight and a half million dollars that we set aside.
You're saying that's available, that it will be okay if we use that money? Okay.
If you decided every, if the board was comfortable moving forward with caveats, with a little asterisk that we want to look at these gravel, we want to have some more question, we have some questions that we want to really understand the pool before we move forward.
Yeah.
If you decided you were comfortable moving forward with all of these, we, we were purposely setting. we, we were purposely setting stuff aside because we knew that this is, this was happening.
Are the parks, the list of parks, are they in any of this? Because they were part of the CIP, right?
They are part of the general fund paving needs, the known.
Okay. So they're part of the 8.5 million dollars, all those parks.
Correct.
But we are going to look at.
Are you referring to this, this slide?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So some of that, hopefully dollars might come down if gravel ends up being cheaper. And then lastly, are there any things that we can research or know or put on our crystal ball or whatever, that we can kind of tell that they're going to come down in price if we wait a year or anything like that?
I don't. You, you deal with this every day, John. I would be.
Yeah, I mean, just.
Yeah, I'd be very hesitant to, to even say that something's going to come down.
Like if you said paving is going to come down if we wait a year, but, but lights are not going to come down. I mean, lights, that's baffling to me, 1.2 million to $4 million, that that's not something that would end up coming down eventually.
Right. And I, just to expand on that a little bit, I think, you know, the description of it being ball field poles and lights, there's a whole lot more to it than what you see from the ground up. There's infrastructure improvements. So in, in, in running new electrical, and you can jump in anytime, John, but there's, there's a whole lot of going up that goes on besides just those lights.
Buying the lights and throwing them up.
Yeah.
Um, because even with inflation nor, you know, that even if it was 5% over five years, 1.2 million wouldn't go to $4 million, you know? And, and so what I'm saying is some of these things I feel like are going to have a rebound. It may not go ever back to 1.2 million, but it could come down to two or 2.5 million to do that. And I'm just worried about spending money now in this most unusual time. That if we wait, I mean, these things always come back. I mean, then they dip, you know, and then there's times when they're begging us for work, you know? So that might be five years from now. And so we, we, but some of these, I feel like if we waited a year, we would see a different world, but I.
Yeah.
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 Can I, can I just?
Really, I mean.
I just want to come in on the FTPs too, and I, and I.
Yeah, safety, I understand.
My concern is in, I don't have any skin in the game. These aren't my departments. I mean, paving is kind of my thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, you have one large windstorm that takes out a light pole during the middle of a softball game, or you have somebody that trips in a parking lot, breaks their ankle, or you have someone who cuts himself on broken tile at the pool. You now have injuries and you've got liability that are just going to hit you from the other side. So as much as this is long overdue and probably needed to be done 10 years ago or so, the preventative maintenance that we can do now is, it, it could save us money. I don't know. There's always that, the what if. So the immediate danger and safety concerns, I think if we had those, we would address those for sure and bring that to the board immediately. But I, I don't know that we have anything that really sticks out that says like, this is going to fall over tomorrow. But again, we don't know.
It changes daily. When we first saw this impact, we saw lumber up at 300%.
Right.
That has dropped, but now you see concrete powder. You can't get it. So that is just one and another. It'll fluctuate, you know, the light poles may drop, but then some of the tile may go up. So it might balance all out at the end of the day. We just got a letter from some of our ADA projects providers that they're holding on doing any of this concrete work because they're not getting any concrete powder, powder allocated to them because they're not a big enough job. It's going to the bridge that's happening right now. That's first. So that concrete, yeah, it's probably going to get worse. And then it may drop back down, but right now it's, it's not looking the best, but it changes every day. Mechanical equipment, I know Train for One has stopped all orders for the rest of the year and not knowing when they're going to open up for more, just because some of the, their equipment is 52 week lead time. We've ordered those rooftop units probably six months ago that were installed at CSC and we're still waiting on back net cards. They're functioning. They're, they're doing, they're serving this purpose, but without back net cards, you have no controls. So some of those things play, I guess, in the market, what's going to fluctuate next day and what's going to go down. I think it all kind of balances out at the end of the day where we're going to be at this high for a little while, but some things may drop down. It's kind of flip of the coin, what you want to hold on. That's why I think when you prioritize safety as, as top priority, we can stand behind that and feel comfortable doing that.
Thanks. That's helpful.
I did ask for some of the costs from construction people that I knew, and I also looked up. So it's saying CBR's new construction cost index forecasts a 14.1% year-over-year increase in construction costs by the end of 2022. His labor and material costs continue to rise. Escalation should stabilize to the 2% to 4% range in '23 and '24 on par with historical averages, but doesn't talk about going down at all.
Okay. Well, I, I guess besides the things that we've said, safety, ADA and maybe things that, yeah, use Diane, and then things that like go into gravel or something like that, that could save money. I, I'm fine with you guys putting together a list of what you think we should do. And if Wendy says we can do it all, you know, I'm not against it. So.
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak prematurely, but I think we've done a lot of that already.
Okay.
Anne Marie, we, we've had so many conversations and Diane, we've had a lot of conversations internally about really dissecting this list. So I, I guess I would say we can go back and look at it again, but I may come back with the exact same presentation. I really, I mean, I'd want to be honest. I want to be completely transparent. We've spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, both finance, leisure services, facilities. We've spent a lot of time looking at this and really eliminating some projects, combining some projects, bringing some in-house. So we can continue to do that. And it, I think if, if we were tasked with that, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but is there a number you'd be comfortable with that we could actually scale it down to? Because for us to walk out and, and have the, get the direction to go back and prioritize it and, and bring it down, what's that magic number? Where is everybody comfortable with? Because I think that could be more manageable than, than us just going out going, okay, well, let's do this. And then, then there's more questions down, down the road. I, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but. And we have some, we have some time constraints on some of it as well. Like the admin parking lot, which, you know, that, that's a huge chunk and that scope has completely changed. So I don't know that it's, that would be all staff recommendations to say eliminate that or scale it back. I think that, that was something that was talked about with the full-time electeds as well. So we'd want to make sure that you guys are included in that.
I would echo what Jade is saying. We, you know, the list that we brought before, the CIP that we brought before the board, you know, five years ago, was a list that staff felt really strongly that was really important, that are being addressed. And so when there was concerns about that listing and what could be cut back, we did meet with the full-time electeds and cut back where we thought we could. You know, I think there were some pretty in-depth conversations with some of the directors that it impacted where I think the full-time electeds got, got comfortable with what was on the list. But other than the fact of maybe looking at some of these, could we do gravel parking lots at some of these, in some of these areas? I don't want to speak for leisure services, but I know the, the, the light poles at Victory Park was a very, very, very important item to them, as was the pool tile at the aquatic center. I'm not sure by us coming, going back, like the list that we've provided is, I think, pretty important from the staff's perspective of what we were asking the board to consider. So to Jade's point, if there's something that you guys want specifically to say, I'm not comfortable with, you know, a $10 million number, we're only comfortable with a $8 million number or whatever that number would be, it would be helpful for us to have some sort of direction to look at where we should be cutting.
I'll, I'll just say, if I'm remembering correctly back to 2017, I remember the list that you brought to us was already prioritized. It was, this is what has to be done. And so we're sitting here talking about it five years later. And so I feel pretty comfortable with what is on the list. I feel like if we came up with some number, whether it's 8 million, 9 million, that's kind of arbitrary anyways. And I feel, I feel comfortable with like doing priorities, like saying we need to do this right away because of safety issues and we will do this afterwards because, you know, not as many people use it and it's maybe not be so clearly a safety issue. But I feel like it would just be arbitrary just to pick a number out of a hat and say, let's go with that, especially if we have the money to do the work. That's just my thoughts on it.
I completely agree with that.
It, just to, the, just to go through this list a little bit too, the paving projects, the only timeline that we have is meeting the bid expiration date on the admin parking lot, which was, I think, the $3 million. The Summit Pool and Aquatic Center, that is slated to happen in the fall of 2023. And then Victory Park is slated to happen as well in the fall of 2023. And everything else is going to kind of fall into place between now and then for the, that bottom line. So we've got some timelines that have already been established by working with the other departments and the vendors in regards to getting those accomplished. I think the one where we could prioritize and look at a phased-in approach would be the paving, other than the admin parking lot. If that, I don't know if that helps or not.
It's because you've already started that, right?
Right. Yes. Yep. But I don't know if that helps at all, but I feel like that's where we could probably walk out and then say, okay, we're going to prioritize this and then work with leisure services on what are you comfortable with? Where's the usage and come back with that. But in regards to the, the other two, and those are pretty big numbers and they've been debated back and forth a lot. It'd be, it'd be nice to at least secure the funding to move forward with, with those and some of the paving.
In the Ball Field Park, you know, it also included the equipment room, which is in shambles also, needs some upgrading. So that, that was included. So I think, I, I mean, Stephen and Diane, are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, so. Does this mean just a bunch of big budget amendments next year when we do this? Or, or is that something that we already included?
I, we could probably do it a couple of different ways. We could probably bring a contingency budget adjustment to the board for capital, you know, before the board, so we don't have to keep coming back for budget adjustments. We could probably do it that way. Would probably be the easiest. Not all of this will probably hit in '23, but it might be a good starting point just to say, all right, we have a contingency set aside. This is what the board's comfortable with. And so then we can just kind of do a transfer once the board, once the projects have officially come before the board and awarded. We just move it out of the contingency into that capital line item.
Thank.
If, if that's what you guys would like to see, or we could, you know, just bring each budget adjustment to the board separately as we're asking the board to award the projects. Just as long as we have some sort of direction from you guys.
Yeah.
Would be helpful.
Can I advocate for one way versus the other? The contingency.
Yeah.
Because then every time we come back with the board, we have to remember this conversation. So I don't know. I think the contingency would be a better way to go.
The contingency idea.
Sounds good.
One thing that I think, and I'm sure you're going to do it, but it might be helpful for the board is, you know, once we get projects underway, to make sure that we have a really good maintenance schedule so that we do not have this going, you know, like forward where we don't know how things have been maintained over the years.
100%. And it's already underway and I actually.
Yeah, John's been working on that.
We will, I can actually share that with you as we move forward in developing it. John's done a great job at putting that together and we will have that for, from paving all the way to HVAC and everything in between, for sure.
Tanya, did you have any other questions or you?
No, I, my, my, my main, my only question is, do we have 8.3 in our, you know, fund balance or? Okay.
Yep.
But I would still like to see like if we can, you know, reduce the cost. And the only, only place I see we can reduce the cost is paving, so.
We can't use any of the roads funds for the parking lots, just for Veterans Way.
Right. In Heritage Parkway.
In Heritage Parkway.
Yeah.
Right road. Okay. Because they're roads.
Right.
But we, we will definitely leave here tonight and then meet with leisure services and engineering. And I know Bill's on the call. He's probably trembling right now. But we will meet with everybody and put together a, a paving analysis then on that, if that's the way the, the board wishes to go.
Oh, somebody, oh, Greg. Greg, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. I was just going to comment when we were talking prioritization and those sorts of things. And just a thought on that, one of the, the problems that has gotten us here today was back when we deferred capital in 2005, six, seven, those years when the economy was really lean and a lot of these projects would have been ideally slated back then. But deferring that capital to where we are today, I think has kind of led to the compounding problem that we have. So I think just a thought, it seems like everybody's kind of on the same page already, but just wanted to put that out there, the deferring things further. Just likely will compound things further because we're going to be looking at the 2024 CIP items and 2025 CIP items soon in next year's budget when we bring that. So that's just going to push more on top of that.
If I, if I could just add to that for the 24 and 25, if you guys remember, I'm sure your eyes go crossed when we start talking budgets, but one of our debt payments, our bond payments rolls off the books. It's about $2 million. So in 2024, that's coming off the book. So our intention was that, starting then, we're going to have about $2 million to start addressing capital year-over-year, you know, and hopefully staying on top of items. So that should really, should really help us.
Maintenance.
Maintenance and capital. Yep.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one.
Oh, Jay.
So are we okay to bring the admin paving project back to the board at the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you hear that, Bill?
Then with that, I'll, I'll bring an RBA before the board, probably in January. I don't know if that'll do it for December to amend the '23 budget to add contingency for, for what we talked about.
Okay.
Great.
I'll say the repaved cart path along Back Road looks really good.
Yeah, it does.
Oh, I didn't look.
We had the turkey trot on it last week.
Okay.
And it will look great all the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did forward the appreciation onto engineering and to Erica. She really kind of, she moved some things around. So it came out really nice.
And they did it very quickly.
Yes.
Which makes us look at for, you know, next year, can we do more than one nine at a time? They did it very, it was like a week, wasn't it?
Yep.
It was quick.
Yeah. So we're going to bid those two out together and hopefully let's not talk about it. But that would be the intent, yes.
Anyone else?
Just one thing to add, I guess, from my end. My team and I were, if, if the board chooses to go through for the additional 10 million for this, it's not going to stop us from coming up with innovative ways to save funds. That's what we do every day, all day. So for one, right now that we have in the CIP is our boiler project at the summit, which is budgeted for $770,000. I'm working with two contractors now trying to narrow it down and that, we're looking probably at $520,000. So that's a couple hundred thousand that's not allocated to any of this. That's what's going to save. So that's what we do quite often. Sometimes we can't get the wins like that, but we will do everything and exhaust every option to be more efficient and come up with better ways to, to save those dollars.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. Great job. Great presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Now the next item is public comment. I see, I don't see anyone in here. I'll go online. We have three attendees. Any public comment? Public comment, public comment for the three attendees. Okay, no public comment. Okay. Any board, any other staff comments on anything?
I guess one, one parting comment is that if anyone has any more specific questions about the list of the other or just any questions at any time, please don't hesitate to email or call. And I'd love to have you guys come in and we can sit down and we can go through more of this in detail and kind of show you all of our spreadsheets and Sarah's spreadsheets, which are fun to go through. But we do have much more detail than what was shown tonight. It was just trying to compact it all. So let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any board comments on anything? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So as you saw today, we are in the news for the LPR study session we had a couple of weeks ago. We were in The Observer, the Free Press, and Channel 7 came in to talk today. So we had, we met earlier this morning and decided. So we had, we met earlier this morning and decided on having a town hall. One of the things you had said summer is to get public input, you know, like, we govern, but the public input is important on this, especially as we've seen what's happened in Ypsilanti Township and City. So we were looking at, in January, having a public session. It could be like a teleconference town hall on it, to get some public input, you know, and decide what we do next.
On one of our study session nights, or during the day, or?
Uh, we, yeah, we can look at that. I mean, which would anyone prefer, during the day, or?
I think people are working.
During the day would limit who's able to participate, so I would be in favor of an evening. Study session night's fine, or, I don't know.
Yeah, I think evening, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, town hall is a good idea. It's, it's important to get the input, because.
Yeah, people can write in, and we can read it also if they can't attend. Okay, anything else? Turkey Trot went fine.
Light show is happening, right?
Yeah, volunteering tomorrow for that.
Is that happening tomorrow?
On Thursday, yeah. It'll be on all month long until New Year's.
So the tickets are for the first couple nights, and then it's just up for people to walk around after that?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, we have many, many holiday events, so there's, there'll be lots happening over the next couple of weeks. But, yep, yeah, the holiday lights will kick off tomorrow night and then be available for anyone to enjoy through New Year's. So we look forward to that. Park staff have been working very, very hard on that, so kudos to them. And each year we'll add to it and make it a little bit bigger and better each year, so we look forward to that.
And there is a holiday market at the Village Arts Factory from 3 to 8. It's an inside-outside market, different vendors on, on Saturday, between 3 to 8, so.
And I think I heard food trucks, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd be remiss. Yeah, Christmas in the Village, Saturday at the Arts Warehouse. Yeah, food trucks, petting farm, kids' activities, full market, all the tenants will be participating. So us, the vendors, should be a really cool event. 3 to 8 on Saturday evening in the Village.
A lot of good holiday shows at the theater also, through the end of the year.
Full schedule, every, every day, just about something going on there, so.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavin, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're gonna be adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.